We're so impolite to one another.
You know, I thought I was trying to be pretty clear that I'm not in favor of 10 and that's too expensive and too vague. And I wanted something smaller and I thought I mentioned eight because I talked to everybody, Ray and Jason and George and Vera. I would support eight. So if it didn't come through, that was, because that clearly was what I was hoping.
Would you have gone for something smaller?
Uh, yeah.
But lovely city of Lake Forest, featuring topics like local news, sports, music, people, food, and occasionally politics. My name is Pete and I'm joined with the voice of Lake Forest High School, Scouts, Basketball, Football, Lacrosse, you name it. Scoo.
All right.
Walker.
Set it up.
How you doing Scoo?
Doing good Pete, how are you? Beautiful, another beautiful Friday.
Perfect day for that artificial turf.
That's it. That's true. That's true. It's a beautiful thing.
Hey, the, uh, the magnificent trio. Let's go out for a little jog out there on the grass.
Yeah.
We'll get to them in a second. Hey, the podcast is sponsored by Shark Eye Beach Fishing and the premier South Florida beach fishing experience at Longboat Key, Florida. The world renowned captain has only put you on the fish, but to help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out at Facebook or at Shark Eye Beach Fishing dot com to schedule an outing. Shark Eye is your guy for your next charter. Disclaimer, Scoo doesn't charter. Scoo, you don't charter, but I did see something where they're picking up some dinosaur teeth out there in Florida.
Really?
Yeah. Shark Eye Outdoor, I guess they're.
Dinosaurs roam there.
They've been around.
Told.
Well, also, uh, you can find some people that didn't pay their bills out there too. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters, Reverend Luke Back from the Church of the Holy Spirit, Matt A, Elizabeth B, Coast and Lance, Otto RDM, Broadstop Breakfast Group in Kenosha, and the Greentown Tavern in Waukegan. Arr, 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 arr.
Have you been there yet?
I have not been there yet.
Come on.
I'm such a bad guy. I'm such a bad guy. But, you know, I did get some comments that, you know, we, we've gone every other week with the podcast and people are saying, hey, what's up? And if we got nothing to talk about, I mean, we could talk about me doing the laundry or something, I guess, but I don't know how many listeners. We'd probably get more listeners with that.
If people ask me, I'm like, well, you know, it's kind of tough when you, no one wants to come on or there's no, uh, input, you know, we can just babble on. That's fine too.
We're good babblers. Well, there's been some, there's been some stuff, uh, going on. Uh, what was it, money?
Continuing stuff.
Well, uh, there was a guy that was pretty pissed off about that Tribune article on the, uh, three aldermen.
Good evening. I'm here today to register my concern as a taxpayer regarding developments in the ongoing lawsuit between the plaintiffs, 361 Westminster LLC and 705 North McKinley Development against the city of Lake Forest. I, like many Lake Forest residents, read about the amended filing on this lawsuit in the March 27th issue of the Chicago Tribune. I found the article concerning. In the amended filing, Alderman Charis, Rumel, Bushman, and Bushman were named in the allegations that if true, could result in serious financial and reputational repercussions for the city. The article further stated that in their lawsuit, the plaintiffs are seeking damages of greater than $1 million, as well as the right to build the third building. I would suspect that if the plaintiffs are successful in this litigation, either through a settlement or judgment, that the city will pay out either the largest sum of money or close to in their history. As a taxpayer, I find that the use of my tax dollars on any kind of lawsuit tends to not be a very good return on investment. The next hearing pertaining this lawsuit occurs this month. Since as a taxpayer, my dollars are being used to help fight this lawsuit, which the city has chosen to do, I can only hope we win this case outright. Anything less, in my opinion, would be deemed a loss. And if that loss occurs to any of the alleged behavior presented in the amended lawsuit, then I believe the three aldermen cited on this amendment should resign immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say that we have ongoing litigation and so there will be no comment.
Enlighten the crowd on the Tribune article because that, I'm not sure everyone has seen or.
Yeah. Well, Dan Dorfman, I want to give him credit for it. I paid for the article. All right. And I, you know, some people get a little pissy.
But you paid for it?
Yeah, I paid for the article. I paid for the Tribune. It was in the Tribune. I think it was in the Sun, Waukegan.
To, to get the article.
Well, yeah. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm trying to paraphrase it and I want to give the guy credit for his content, you know, but, ahead of a key vote last September, a few members of the Lake Forest City Council pressured a fourth alderman to join them in a vote that prevented the construction of a proposed condominium. Uh, the plaintiffs claiming an ongoing lawsuit. So there's lawsuit going on. Anytime you got a lawsuit going on, people don't want to say anything. So this is like all alleged stuff. I, we're, we're just reporting the news, right Scoo?
Right.
But allegedly what happened was, uh, and we don't like to say block the, but project. We like to say, uh,
I believe it's called the McKinley Road Project.
McKinley Road Project. Right, right. Uh, but it seems to me, uh, Alderman Jennifer Charis, Alderman Melanie Rumel, and Alderman Ray Bushman participated in a concerted campaign through emails, text messages, and telephone calls to persuade fellow Alderman Eileen Looby Weber to change her vote before a September 7th council meeting. At that meeting, the council affirmed in a four to three vote with Alderman Jed Morris abstaining. Come on Jed. A, a previous vote by the city's Historic Preservation Commission denying a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed building that would be just east of the city's downtown. So that's just right about, right across from the library or kitty corner from the library, right?
Yeah, where the, um, right on Western, Western, on Westminster, uh, not West Minister, Westminster. Where the, uh, it's a little vacant lot that tucks back, um, and butts up against the.
Yeah, it's got a big wooden fence around it. It's got a bunch of dumpsters back there. I'd rather have the dumpsters there. The dumpsters look great.
I like the, I like the crane there, not the crane, but the, uh, they just knocked down the house adjacent to that. But I like the big truck there that they got sitting there. But, uh, yeah, that's, uh.
Well, Alderman Rumel, Charis, and Bushman's efforts convince Alderman Weber to vote to affirm the HPC's denial of demonstrate an utter lack of good faith to making a diligent effort to achieve the development required by the development agreement. The filing read, moreover, by making their decision to affirm the HPC even before the public hearing on plaintiff's appeal, these aldermen denied plaintiffs their constitutional right to due process of the law. So it also claimed that Charis, Bushman, and Rumel breached their contractual obligations to the plaintiffs to act in good faith with diligent efforts to affect all outcomes in development agreement. Rumel, Charis, Bushman, and Weber, as well as city attorney Julie Tappendorf, all declined to comment on the suit citing the pending litigation. Told you. So I guess May 18th, what are you doing May 18th, Scoo?
Uh, May 18th, what day is that?
It's the 18th day of May.
Yeah, that's usually a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
Why, what's going on then?
That's when the next court date is.
Oh. Get other things I need to do. But yeah, it's, uh, it's unfortunate. Um.
Now, these same three, these are the same three that want to go out, uh, do some laps out on the, uh, Deer, Deer Park, uh, turf, huh?
Yeah, just ironic that it's, you know, yeah. It's tough to comment on it just because I'm still shocked at what happened behind the scenes. And, and this project has been rambling on for a few years now. And my understanding is it was originally approved and approved again, and it got to this point where I guess it went back to the HPC. And that's where all the shenanigans started because the vote before that was a four, three vote in favor of doing it, I believe. And then they pushed, or, yeah, I'm not, pushed it back to the HPC to review through their 17 criteria and then all this stuff started pulling, pulling the vote.
Let, let me continue. The plaintiffs, the plaintiffs are seeking damages of greater than 1 million, as well as the right to build the third building. Who's paying that 1 million, Scoo?
Well, uh, if you can see yourself in the camera here, like I can see myself, that answers your question. Cause we are taxpayers and we get to foot the bill for this.
Okay. And that 1 million, that's about what, 10% or so, give or take of the artificial turf?
Yeah. And you know, I'm not even going to get it. Oh, we can get into the artificial turf, but even to compare it, there's, there's no set cost, which I guess all the crazy craziness around the turf. There hasn't been a final dollar amount really tagged to that. So.
Yeah, yeah. It could be more.
It could be more, it could be less.
It's always gonna be more.
But yeah, it's, this is actually real.
Yeah.
The turf is still kind of up in the air. It's still got to get approved, final stuff and all that. They're just going through the preliminary stages to get actual numbers. But, uh, this, this loss is real. Yeah.
I mean, isn't this kind of, look, I, I, we don't know. We're, we're, you know, paraphrasing an article.
All you can see is what you see.
What you see. And then doesn't the, uh, Attorney General of Lake County, doesn't the Attorney General of Illinois, don't they care about stuff like this?
Uh, you just dipped the question well beyond my, uh.
Out of your skis, my skis too.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, uh, you know, as a citizen for 58 years of this lovely community, I don't remember anything where a lawsuit occurred. Now, there's been lawsuits against the city, but lawsuits against the city because of Alderman's actions. I, I just haven't, I mean, we're not, as this all unfolds, you know, suit. Initially, you see, okay, you watch it and go, yeah, they, they voted it down. Okay. Some people are going to like it. Some people aren't going to like it. But then, you know, the petitioner files a lawsuit and you kind of start to scratch your head. It's going, why would someone, you know, file a lawsuit? You know, it went through the process supposedly, right?
Yeah.
And then all this stuff starts cropping up and, you know, you find out that, you know, there's shenanigans going on with Alderman trying to not give the, the petitioner due process, which is just absolutely crazy. And they swayed a swing vote to go their way by, you know, whatever it's saying, emails, you know, texts, phone calls, whatever. But, uh, the funny thing is, I went back and viewed that particular council meeting.
Yeah.
And I looked at the fourth alderman that was, that was coerced. And I say coerced in my sense to.
Is it Looby or Looby Weber or Weber?
Looby Weber. Looby Weber.
The flower, flower lady.
Yeah. And the look on her face throughout that meeting was, I mean, I think she was going to hurl.
She looked like someone that was, uh, getting the arm put to her.
Which now answers all the questions. Why was she, because, you know, I don't even think she was wanting to do it, but got pressured to. And then of course, now look at what we're at and we're at a lawsuit. The city's at a lawsuit that, you know, I don't know how that's going to end up, but if it goes through, you know, the city's got paid, that's us. That's taxpayers. And never would happen, would have happened if the, you know, the shenanigans, as I call them, that the three aldermen were doing. You know, I, I mean, what blows my mind is that, you know, as an alderman.
They did it on the record.
Yeah. They, well, that's the one thing. They did it on the record, which just brings in a whole other stuff. But to sit, you're supposed to be doing what's, as an elected official, doing what's right for the community now and in the future. And they completely went against that. And, and now it's created a lawsuit that, you know, I know what Tom was saying when he was speaking. It's like calling for their resignation. They should. They, their actions, illegal actions, or whatever you want to call them, created this lawsuit.
Alleged, but who?
Alleged, created this lawsuit, plain and simple. And, you know, who knows? I mean, if they didn't do all the behind the scenes stuff, Pete, and they go to the council meeting, who knows to say, votes could have changed by Alderman, you know, as it was. So who knows? I mean, they might not have had to even do what they did. And because of what they did, um, and now the city is facing a lawsuit. And, and that unfortunately, yeah. I mean, what, and what's even more egregious, I think, is that, you know, fast forward to the, um, turf controversy.
Yeah.
It's the three again.
And you know what, Scoo?
It's, no, no, wait, it's the three aldermen again against it. And on top of it, um, the city council meeting where, where, what was put forth in front of the city council was the plan to take it to an engineering study and evaluation to find out, get more numbers on doing this. It wasn't really necessarily like, we're going to do it because it's still got to come back and forth. But the one alderman sat there and all she did was, she was cackling about, oh, this is going to cost the taxpayers a dollar or $170 a tax bill and going on and on about that. But yet she created a lawsuit that's actually happening. And it just blows my mind that they.
Scoo, can I, can I do you one better?
Yes.
Here, let me tap that. Same Alderman rubble. Okay. History doesn't repeat itself, but it sometimes rhymes. This could be a repeat. Those three people, they agreed to have the consult, whatever, they had an agreement from the last meeting, right? And then they had the city council meeting this past week. And then they say, hey, wait a minute, I didn't agree to that. You know what I'm talking about?
Oh, oh, I mean, the, are you talking about this week's, uh, city council?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It absolutely continues to just blow my mind. So that, that this Monday's meeting was about just passing some omnibus stuff. And of course, the, um, what came up was the turf. They, uh, went through the staff like they always do, their job correctly, and went through the whole process of, um, vetting out the right contractor and all that to, to begin the engineering study and all this stuff.
To entertain a motion to approve the awarding of the recommend, or the rewarding of the contract per the, here, let me read it. Approval of unanimous recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the architectural engineering services for three, um, sorry, for new synthetic turf fields at Deer Path Community Park to Hitchcock Design Group in the amount of $388,000 plus 10% contingency and the amount of three, three, $38,800 for a total of $426,800. So motion.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Nay.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Nay.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Four yay, two nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All, all it was, was now it comes to city council and approve it, right? That's what that's for.
But, but they agreed.
And you got Bushman, and then you got Bushman arguing, he wants to re-bring it up and vote again on it. Like, it's like, you know, and I think it was, uh, Preschlack, um.
Oh, he got fired up. I like that dude.
Yeah. I mean, it's like, are these people crazy? I mean, it's just like constantly, constantly, they can't let stuff go and look what it's created. And, and here's the thing, and I, it's, in my, this all gets back to what, uh, all gets back to the caucus and how we select our people. Okay? And, um, first off, you got an alderman. So here, here's, and I know Pete, how you feel about the caucus and all that stuff.
Oh, don't worry. I got something for you.
And that, you know, we should probably hire an outside firm and all that. But I'm going to say this again, the caucus process works. It's the people that deviate from it and all that. So, and this has been, whether it's a hard written rule, or it's always been kind of a rule of thumb when we're, when you're on the caucus, and I should say, we, because we're all caucus members, bring forward a potential alderman. One of the underwritten rules is that alderman, potential alderman should have served on one of the five top boards. Meaning Parks and Rec, Plan Commission, um, Building Review Board. I think HPC's in there. And I think zoning, I might be wrong, but there's five boards that are, you know, and the whole theory and process behind that is that these people that are serving on these boards, number one, they're working with city staff because those boards are really, you're intertwined with the city staff, knowing how, um, the city manager type of government that we're under, um, operates and works. And you learn how to work with staff and see what they go through. Um, and to be an elected official like an alderman, you want to have that background because it is a daunting task to be on the council because behind the scenes, there is a lot of work and you're representing the entire city. You're not representing your specific ward that you're in. Yes, you represent your constituents there, but you're more, you look globally. And the unfortunate thing with how the caucus has operated in the last several years is, first off, we have, of those three aldermen, one has never served in any capacity through the, the processes.
Which one is that?
Um, Charis, never has served on any boards or commissions and.
Well, she's piecing out anyways.
Well, I, I understand that, but she's pieced out last year, but yet she's involved in all these things for some reason. Um, so she never served. So she got somehow through our process, she kind of jumped the shark and was all of a sudden an alderman. And that's the caucus. Um, because there were a lot better qualified people in the first ward.
Oh.
That were not looked at. And Pete, you were there at the time, so I don't know that whole process what happened, but, so that was one. And nothing against Jennifer and all that, but it, it's, you have to understand how the process works in order to be an elected official, because you're constantly working with the city staff. And a lot of these people don't even realize that, you know, Lake Forest is a city manager run government. You know, I've heard people all the time going, oh yeah, the mayor and the alderman, they get paid so much. No, they don't. It's a city manager run government. Everything funnels through Jason. They all report to him and that's how the structure is. And so you.
And he's doing great despite all this crap.
Yeah. And, and so are the staff. And you have to work as a volunteer. You're not really, you are making policy as an alderman and passing tax levies and all, but you're also working very closely with the staff because that's how it operates. So you got one person that's never done that. How that happened, I don't know. And another person who, again, never was on any of the five major boards. Last I checked. I mean, I think she was on Elloa Farms or Open Lands or something like that prior, but again, and, and she's served for a while, so she understands how the process works. But again, coming on board when she did, there, no experience besides her husband was mayor, but that doesn't count. And then the biggest one, who I am more disappointed in of the three than the two, is Bushman.
Yeah.
Because he was, I believe he was on BRB and Plan Commission, if I'm, I'm corrected. So he knows how the whole process works. And he's the one that continues to seem like he just wants to go against everything. I mean, the sky, the city says the sky is blue. He says gray. All of them do. And it's just progress is being just thwarted by people that, you know, we've relied on as citizens. You know, it, it's like we can't, and, and again, you could go on for ever, just going backwards in time and saying, okay, this, we didn't get through, this, we didn't get through, this, we didn't get through, which in the long run benefits the city. But we have a past history of it. And now it's just kind of like, we have this brick wall that we're going up against when it comes to progress. And no one wants progress. I mean, we want progress, but we don't. And now we got aldermen that are behind the scenes, you know, doing what they can shenanigan wise to prevent that. And it's just, it's sad. I mean, it, that is not how this town's supposed to work. And again, I think it gets back to the whole process of putting people on these boards and commissions that one aren't experienced or don't want to be on there because they don't show up to meetings or the, the vetting process has to change. And hopefully with a new regime on the caucus, that changes a bit.
Well, Scoo, the.
And I know where you're going.
The caucus now, the number one thing that they're supposed to do is vet, right? Vet meaning interview.
They're an HR department.
HR department, right? Okay. So if that's what their number one job is, who vets the vetters? Nobody.
Well, I, I mean, again, I, and this is where I guess you and I may disagree a bit is.
Yeah.
The, the caucus, who, the caucus has in each, four wards, right? Because the city has four wards and you have nine people in each ward. Collectively getting openings in the city from the boards and commissions. And if it's in their ward, they're interviewing. And they have a, a, a huge database of past and present volunteers that want to step up and raise their hand. And their job is to, if I have a second ward or first ward position open, that second ward group goes out and scours the ward to find people. But that's not happening anymore. You know, it's laziness. It's like, well, you know what? I talked to a buddy and he said he wants to do it and.
Scoo, take a sip of tea. Take a sip of tea. Let me, let me go through, let me talk about not vetting the vetters. Okay? Cause look, I was there two years before, you know, no masks. Okay. Mike Adams was a past caucus president. He picked his executive board, who he wants to have around them. Okay? The caucus committee doesn't have a say. They just supposedly put their hand up and say they want to do it. But that's not what happens. Mike Adams says, you know what? These are the people that I want around me, starting with Kim Fail. All right. So you got Kim Fail. She's going to be the, uh, the vice president who will turn into the next president, right?
Right.
Okay. She selects who she wants around her on the executive board. Okay? Now they'll say the executive board is only, you know, five or six votes. Okay? But the executive board, I would, I've seen, they carry influence. They carry influence in an alderman meeting where they say, if all things being equal, please vote for the female. So, so I'm just saying, that's influence. Now, these people they had selected, okay? Mike Adams turned to Kim Fail and then Kim Fail turned into David Hunt. He's the new president. Okay? You have the new executive board that was named. Did you see that, Scoo?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let me just go through the board, uh, the new executive board. Okay? Who's going to be your next president next year? Chris Bennett. Why? Because he's the vice president now. All right. Internal communications, Steve Retey, he's in the first ward. I know Steve, good guy. He just joined last year. So he's, boom, one year, he's on the executive board. First.
That's part, part, part of the problem.
Well, I don't, you know what? I don't know him from, I, other than he's a good guy to sit next to.
No, not, not him. No, not, not him. I'm not saying him.
Yeah, okay.
I'm saying, one year and you're on the exec council.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, okay. So then, external communications from Ward One. You have Susan Sailor Daly, she was the Ward One Chair who was there when I was there. So you have of the six people on the executive board, David Hunt, Steve Ratai, Susan Sailor Daly are all in Ward One. Okay.
That's a good mix.
Uh, Kristen Vallee, she's the secretary. Uh, she's been the secretary for more than. This coming year, because I think the last secretary never showed up for any of the meetings, so Kristen had to pitch in and do all the work.
And I I'll be honest with you, when, when, when that comes up and they're asked who wants to be secretary, I am sure. There are basically zero arms going up then, oh, yeah, I want to be secretary, and it's probably. Who, I don't want to take notes on the whole meetings all the time, and I, yeah, so.
Uh, and then Joe O'Riddy. Uh, I think he's a treasurer now, and I think he was new last year. On the, on the caucus, so, uh, you know, there, there you go. Now, when I was there, I put a pretty big push on uh. Vetting who the president is going to be, the vice president's going to be, it's as simple as going to Lake County Records. And seeing what you see, and then doing a secondary check. So if anybody cares that's out there, and anybody that touches money. Whether you're a treasurer or you're doing the special events. And I think I forget, forgot the special event person. Yeah, the fundraiser, Cynthia McCullough, some fundraising. So there's your seven people, three are out of Ward One. Uh, why is that? Because David Hunt was out of Ward One. Now.
Well, we got also a upcoming mayoral. Position to fill, and but I, again, I I'm not going to get down into that, those.
Well, it's if nobody's looking.
But but I think the thing, Pete, is it's not a matter of who vets the exec council. The exec council has taken on a self. Um, righteous um stance. Lately, because the exec council, and this is kind of funny, because I've heard this. In our past conversations with certain people, that all the, all the exec council is there to do. Is to manage the day to day, if you will, process of the caucus committee. Which is exactly one hundred percent accurate. However. Um, back to the question, so those nine. People in each ward, you know, they'll bring up whoever it is to the full caucus, and then there's a vote on it. And yes, the the council, exec council is one person, one vote, just like everyone else. But they've taken on the stance of um righteousness, where they think they are higher than that. And that they can influence, and I think the influence comes from. They're picking these people, like you just said, David Hunt, who's picking his uh. Exec council based on, you know, who he likes in the first ward and all that. Well, that. Influence then comes, is trickled down to these new members and all that, where I think it's just, you know. The process is skewed in a sense, because, you know, whoever you're nominating is. You know, it it's contingent on what the vice president and the president feel, which I think is a joke. Because that's not how it should be, and I also think it's a joke, because I think. You know, there's, I know these presidents and vice presidents, whoever are, you know, getting input from. Council members, which I think is, you know. Council members, you know, anyone can refer people, but I don't know if it's right that, you know, they're, they're asking people about certain people and. Vice versa, that's really not. Um, right. They shouldn't be doing that. If you're, you're, the caucus is a separate entity, and. They can take referrals from anyone, but they should be making decisions within that body, not. Making decisions based on other people, if that makes sense, and that's just, so it's, again, I'm. I believe in the caucus system and all that, and I want to emphasize caucus system. However, a system and process can always be manipulated by people, and if you get the wrong people doing it. You get to a point where I think we're at, and the city is saying. You know, God, what's what's going on here? All these boards and commissions, we can't fill boards and commissions, we can't. You know, people get kicked off boards and commissions, people don't show up, it's like, you know, and guess who's the end result victim of this? Is the city staff, because the city staff.
Taxpayers.
And the taxpayers, but the city staff more than, because they're trying to do their job. And when you have to interact with people that don't really care. What happens, or they think the city staff people are below them, it it's just crazy, and that's how it is right now. And it's um, and Jason and his staff are doing whatever they can, and they're doing admirably. And and I disagree with city staff on stuff before in my past and all that, but you know what? At the end of the day. You know. Boards and permission, boards and commissions are supposed to be there to work with them, not work against them. And that's what it seems like. And when, and I say work again, work against doesn't mean um. You're consciously doing it. Work against is when you are on a board or commission, and you don't read the packet. Or you don't show up to meetings, that's working against, because you can't help them, you know, make decisions, so I. It's full circle, it's a shame, you know, back to Tom, when he was, what he said at the city council meeting, you know, hopefully. This thing.
Well, Sco, is it a, those three aldermen, allegedly. Is that a question of character, what they did? If it's true.
Well, of course it is.
Okay, it's a question of ethics and character, right?
Right.
So who picked those people? I mean, who, we, well, the caucus committee, these people of Lake Forest, right?
Right, the caucus, the caucus brought them forward, and they said, we are, we are supporting. And the caucus is representing the city, and when the caucus brings these three aldermen forward and says, this is who the caucus supports. You know, that's why it's interesting, there's, you know, typically, you know, these unopposed, or not unopposed, but opposed elections. No one, on the opposition side rarely gets voted in, because the caucus person is the, you know. So, yeah, I mean, it's the caucus. If if they're stepping up and raising their hand to volunteer, they're not getting paid. Then they have an obligation to do the right thing, and what that volunteer position calls for. And these people on the caucus are not doing that.
Because it's tied to, we got aldermen with questionable character and ethics, and it stems from the caucus, and nobody's keeping.
Yeah, but you can't correlate, you know, you can't, I mean, the head of the caucus. Because, Pete, the head of the caucus, when those aldermen were put on, is not the head of the caucus now. So it does, to me, it doesn't, yeah.
Well, it's the same system of passing on the vice president, the president, yeah, it is. Same system.
We can, we can disagree. Now, we're at a point where we got, you know, people inexperienced, um, getting the city in lawsuits.
How do we correct it?
Um, well, we've talked about this before, my opinion is, you know. And I know it's hard to do, but the city can't intercede in it, but the mayor can, and I think the mayor should be taking a look at. The caucus process and saying, is this, you know, can we tweak it? I've always said, you know, I'm not going to say. This and not have a solution. My solution is the mayor should have an outside group that he puts together. That um is kind of that intermediary between the caucus. And him when it comes to people being moved forward, and I think that group, big or small, whatever it is, should be, you know. Consistent of either ex, ex aldermen, ex mayors, or, you know, people that have served in a. That capacity to oversee stuff, because I think um. Or I I know, because I've talked to people, and the opinion is of the same, that the caucus right now is a broken system, because it's not working the way it should be. But again, it's the people, and hopefully this new caucus that they've redone, now the, the in going and outgoing. These new members on there see that, and they understand what their role is, and it's not a good old. I shouldn't even say good old boys, because it's not, it's not a newcomers club, where all we're doing is picking people. We're friends with, and that's newer to the community. So I I don't know, I mean, I don't.
One of the reasons I left the caucus was because of this executive board issue, it's not a secret, okay?
Right.
And before I left, they're going to change the process where the, the committee members. Could nominate people to go on the executive board, right? Didn't do it, it's the same thing. Hunt picked the, that's why you got three people from Ward One on there, and you, you're going through the same process. So it's just going to keep going. Uh, and and now we're starting to get no. I mean, the the media is starting to pay attention to Lake Forest, saying, hey, wait, what's going on? I left Chicago to get away from this, now I'm back in it. Every time I leave, they pull me back in.
Yeah, but you know.
So do you think Melanie Rumel is going to be mayor now?
Wow, that's a good jump. Um, absolutely not. I I would, I would not. Have faith in her, Charis, or um.
Bushman.
Bushman and and Louie. To be mayor, and I know it's a aspiration of every alderman is, yeah, I'd like to be a mayor someday, but I I don't think um. Those should be, Melanie, no, absolutely not. As a voter, as a taxpayer, I don't want to. See my taxes go up because of a lawsuit that was solely. Created because of what some aldermen did behind the scenes to. I I mean, no, those people don't deserve to be mayor, and you know what? They, you know, it's like Tom. Uh, and Tom's a great guy, the guy that spoke at the, the city council, a wonderful guy. And he's absolutely right, if this lawsuit does go through, they should resign. And honestly, probably resign now, because it's just, you know, we have other things in the city that need pending. Counsel approval.
If the plaintiff said, hey, those three aldermen resigned, we'll drop the lawsuit, let us build our building and drop the lawsuit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that works, I doubt that is a, is a.
You got a magic wand, it's our show, we can do whatever we want, Sco.
That's true, that's true. Uh, I I, outside the lawsuit, I think, you know, if it, if it's our. Only our opinion and how it, they should step down, they should have stepped down a long time ago. And they should step down, because again, what an alderman's responsibility is, is to work with staff and. Do the right thing for the city now and in the future, and. Now that this stuff is out in the Tribune of all places, they should be stepping down, because if they're not going to respond to it. And unfortunately, at the um. Council meeting, you know, that's, it was, you know, Tom spoke on public. Um, non agenda items, and, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately. Finish my point is, when, what Tom said, you know, unfortunately, the council members, just like every board and. Commission member, when it's time for the public to speak, cannot respond, that's just the process. But what they should have done is they should have stepped up and spoke. Because, you know, I, you know, granted, there, it's a lawsuit going on, and no comment, no comment, but. I I see what my eyes are seeing. I mean, tell me where this is not really true. I mean, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not that stupid, but. Man, if you're sitting there using city emails and texts and all this, and trying to persuade somebody to. Who already had voted in a past meeting one way, now you're like, you know, let's try to strong arm this person to change her vote. You know, before even the, the petitioner has a chance, it's just crazy. And they should step down, they should answer, I I know they can't and all this, but, you know, again, you said, this is our little world right now.
Magic wand.
They should be.
Customer service.
They should be stepping up, explaining themselves, and then stepping down. I mean, it's just. They're, by not stepping down, they're just creating more angst. For the city and and the residents, as you mentioned, that, you know, people are looking at the city now. I mean. It's embarrassment. If anything, it's an embarrassment, and on top of it, we have another fricking issue. Going through the city that these three aldermen don't like, and yet, one alderman sat there and was. Just kind of downplaying everything and saying how much it's going to cost the fricking taxpayers to do this. And yet, she understands she's created a lawsuit. I I mean, it's just crazy, and.
On the, on the other.
I just pissed off because it just is embarrassing, and.
Two people we didn't talk about is. Louie Weber and Jed. If you're going to be an alderman, you have to be a leader, right? You're leading people, right?
Well, I mean, you're voted, so, yeah, I guess.
Well, okay, so. Louie Weber, I mean, she runs a business, uh, she leads people, why, why is she getting pushed around by those three?
I don't know. I don't know in her mind, why, why.
And the, the other thing that.
And her father was an alderman before that, so I I mean, and a good alderman, so I, it's just.
Because in one of those records, it says, oh, I wish we would have had this judge, because I know the judge.
Who said that?
It's in the foyer, it's in the lawsuit, alleged, alleged. But, and then Jed, he abstains from the original lawsuit. And then he throws a monkey wrench into things, where he says, you know what, give me a. He wants to reduce the size of the artificial turf or whatever, and that caused. Melanie Rumel and the other two to say, oh, I thought we didn't agree about it last week. You know what I'm talking about?
I know exactly what you're talking about. I mean, again, I'm not going to parallel Jed and the, the um. Not abstention from the building and tie that to the, the fields, but, I mean. He abstained from voting, because he lives in one of them, which. Hey, then all the aldermen should be abstaining, because they live in Lake Forest. I mean, come on, Jed. He should have been voting, it it's, you know, it's a cop out, and.
It's weak, I'll say, Pete Jantzer says it's weak.
Yeah, and it is weak, and on the field stuff, his, you know, his try to, let's make it smaller. Um, you know, and now everyone wants to do this, you can't do a hybrid. You can't do part turf, part regular, synthetic turf, I mean, you can't shrink it. I mean, my God, these people just.
And they, they agreed to it last time, it was already agreed to.
Well, they agreed to take a look at, if it can be, Jed wanted to, if it can be shrunk a little bit, but. Listen, our, our hybrid in the city would be our fourteen other. Grass fields that have to still be maintained, and now a turf field, that's what a hybrid is. That's what we will have in Lake Forest, is that hybrid. But to cut this in half, this defeats the whole purpose. It's just, it's just. It's lunacy, and.
They can, we, we deserve better, Sco, I'm just sorry, we deserve better.
Well, we got, it's, but, yeah, I agree, and and of course, you know, people don't really, I hate to say this, don't really care. You know, because look at the voting turnout, and to get these guys on, I mean, it's not like, we have twenty plus thousand, I know everyone can't vote, but. You know, it's a pretty low number that turned out to vote for the alderman and mayor and all that.
The Attorney General looks at things, and then hits the Tribune again, then I think more people are going to, whatever, I just hate to get to, to all that.
This is, shame on, shame on them.
It's just like, why? Why? All the stuff, all the good.
Pete, you were in Chicago, isn't when the aldermen in Chicago are doing stuff like this, aren't they getting paid under the table and all that?
Allegedly, I mean, old school, you would go to the bars and say, hey, I'll buy you a round, come on, hop on the bus, let's go vote, you know, come, you know. I I've, I've heard that that goes on, but this is just. It's a mixture of hubris, lazy. It, it's a mixture of hubris, laziness, ego.
I think it's all ego. It's just, you know. What are you gaining out of it? That's my question is. What's the, to, to, to go against progress? What? What is the uptick benefit for the city? If I'm an alderman and, and you can vote no on stuff, that's fine. But. When you're going to vote no, what is the upside? To doing that is, i- i- I mean, this is all about progress in our community and growing our community for the future. I, I, I don't understand that.
The, these three people, they're trying to placate. The five percent of people that make up eighty percent of the negativity on social media and all the chirping. All the Terry typers.
You know, and I don't even, I don't even say that, Pete. I think it's the fact that, you know. It, it's, it's the lack of wanting to understand. Um, the issues that are at hand for the council and the staff. And it's more, we rouse up. The community in certain areas and it's unfortunate because a lot of these people, not all of them, but a lot of them. Don't. Really look into the past of a certain issue like this building. That's gotten so much controversy. I don't think anyone that has screamed against it can really sit down and tell me. The whole history and it's a several year history on this thing. And it's just this cursory, like we're trying to kill the historic. World in Lake Forest and that's, that's the result. That's the, that's the, I stand by that type of thing that a lot of people are taking. Without understanding what really is going on. And that's what really is sad and, you know, people take that and try to run with stuff and then people aren't educated on things.
Scoob, we need leaders with character and ethics. That's all.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, let's get on to something uh. Fun. Should Lake Forest have a public swimming pool? By far, we got the most responses. We got even more responses for, from this than we did for the pizza.
Thirty of our viewers, what was the uh?
Oh, like times twenty. But what do you think the percentage was?
Oh, God. Percentage of what?
I'd just say yes or no. Should we have a public pool? Yes or no?
Sixty forty.
Which way?
Four pool.
You're close. Fifty-five, forty-five.
Wow.
And. We had our unscientific survey or poll with ourselves that. Said sixty percent of the people in Lake Forest are part of country clubs. Well, it's. Looks like. It looks like it's more like forty-five percent. So we were off.
Yeah, I, I, well, and the other thing we didn't talk about was residents with their own pools.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I just, like I said last time when we talked about it, I mean, the pool issue. It. It went through. Several iterations to, I think, two referendums. Voted down, so it, it's never gonna. I mean, I, I.
You know what?
I like to see it, but I'd never see it.
All the Terry typers out there, I, I bet you they're, they're all pool people.
Floor pool?
Floor pool, yep.
Yeah, they're four. Yep.
Okay, fair enough. So there you go. Question asked, question answered. Anything else, Scoob?
Yeah, I got a lot of stuff, Pete.
Go.
This came in the mail. You see this?
Hold on, let me see. No, I didn't.
It's backwards. It came in the mail yesterday. It's the dialogue. Yeah, that goes out on the city. It's about what's going on in the city and all this.
Okay.
My buddy, Rob Carmichael, on the cover.
Who is Rob?
Cover story. He, he is the curator at the Wildlife Discovery Center. Out at Eloa Farms. And a great little article done on him by our own. I don't know if you can see this. It's backwards. David Sweet. David Sweet wrote it, yeah.
He's a writer and a half, man.
I mean, it's a great, Wildlife Discovery is great. It's a, you know, if people haven't gone out there. Go out there. If you have, if you're looking for something to donate to. Donate to the Wildlife Discovery Center. Rob Carmichael, what is it? Ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven? Went to Fred Jackson at the time, the executive director and said, hey, I have, I have an idea. And um. You know, Fred and the city manager at the time. Kind of looked at him and said, okay, go for it. Um. And his idea was creating a haven for. You know. Orphan. Wildlife, so to speak. And. He started this thing in the rec center. In the old art room. Um, and he had cages of a few animals, snakes and all that. And it, it has grown into a national, if not worldwide. Um. Venue for rescues for. They moved him out from the rec center to Eloa Farms. He's taken that thing to educating. Our community, our kids on wildlife, everything you can think of. They have some fantastic animals out there. And um, he's just taken an idea. And expanded and it's the, and there's nothing like it in the state. You know, he's been on WGN, he's been on national stuff. I mean, it's. What he has done in the time and I, I'm proud. He's a friend of mine. He grew, I grew up with him. And his twin brother and it's just. He does not get the kudos. That he deserves. And um. You know, my, my biggest concern with Wildlife Discovery is that, you know, Rob's getting close. To the end. I mean, like all we are, we're getting older and retirement's in the horizon and all that. And what, what really kind of. Frightens me. He's done such a fantastic job. And, you know, I was part of a little initiative back when I was on the rec board where. Um, a lot of people wanted at Eloa Farms wanted to kick him out. Remove him. Um, and Wildlife Discovery from Eloa. And, and I believe he was the first tenant. When um, Eloa Farms reopened up and luckily. He stayed in there. He's their best tenant. And, but what concerns me is, you know, when he does retire and, you know, a well-earned retirement whenever it is. But who picks it up? You know, who picks this up and keeps it going? And it is just, I mean, Pete, if you haven't been out there, you should go out there. It's just.
Not been out there. Where is it?
It's um. Eloa Farms is, God, what's the road? It's the road across the street. From on Waukegan Road, uh, from the hospital entrance.
Yeah.
So the hospital, you go east. If you're going north on Waukegan Road, you turn right to go into the hospital. You turn, I, I want to say that's Middle Fork. Turn left and you drive all the way down till it ends. You take a left off Waukegan Road, drive all the way down there. Eloa Farms, which is in itself a beautiful gentleman's farm that was redone and all that. And um, has great things. They have a, um, starting to open up their farmer's market, great stuff there. Rob's out there, is the big tenant out there with the animals. And um, it's, it's, it's absolutely fantastic. And it's good to see.
We should have him come on the show.
Recognition. I, I've tried, unfortunately, there's. Within the city, it's like not, uh.
Oh.
It's not approved to go. But, you know, I've asked him.
Mayor George. Justin, we take care of you guys all the time and it's not good to come on the show.
But all I got to say right now is that. Wildlife Discovery is phenomenal. Rob has done an unbelievable job. And not only with that, but, um, you know, because it runs on donations. I mean, it's not, the rec's not, there's not a lot of money. You know.
Yeah.
Like with the rec department not being a, a park district. Taking little tiny money from the city and he falls under that. So it relies to run that place on donations. He's done a phenomenal job of getting donors, big donors. But they need all the help they always can get and people should donate and even more so, you know. Keeping that there in perpetuity when Rob does go and, you know. We as citizens have to go out and figure out and help Rob. With this because it's fantastic. It's just, and then the animals are crazy.
Good for you, Rob.
They had just a turtle there, Pete, that just passed. But I think it was like nine hundred years old or something. It was just gigantic. I mean.
Soup?
Huge. Oh my God, huge. But um, great article. Yeah, great article, um. You know, there's some other things in here that I kind of. This is the one where it comes out with all the summer stuff.
Yeah.
And you're like, this one, Pete, page twelve. It's all the rec concerts in the square.
Yeah.
You know, that's coming out. First concert's June fourteenth. Well, that's at Northcroft Park. The Feel Good Party Band.
Oh, we like to feel good.
Yeah, then, then the Market Square thing kicks off with good, clean fun. And it's every Thursday. Food trucks or whatever is going to be out there. Petty, Petty Kings. Yes, I wonder what that's going to be.
Interesting.
Petty Kings, what do you think that is?
Uh, I don't know.
Come on, probably a Tom Petty cover band maybe?
Pendergrass?
How about this one? Petty, P E T T. Why? God, you're. How about the next week? Dancing Queen. I wonder what that cover band is.
I don't know.
One of your favorite, Pete, Abba.
What's the pronoun?
Yeah, right. Then you got classical blast, the class of sixty-eight and then July twenty-first, the class of sixty-eight playing and the car show.
You better get there fast.
So a lot of good stuff there. What's the next one on here, Pete? Deerpath Golf Course.
Oh, Deerpath Golf Course, big fan.
Big, big golfer there, Pete, but the lawn at Deerpath is opening up this summer. A new state of the art, uh, putting, chipping and training center that they just built, started building last year. It's going to open up this year. Phenomenal stuff.
Can I ask you a question about the things that are happening this summer?
Yeah.
What is this splash pad?
The splash pad. That's opening up soon too, out at uh.
On sixty? Across from Lake Forest Academy?
Yeah, what's, what's the name? I'm losing my mind. Yeah, it's opening up there.
What is the difference between having a swimming pool and a splash pad?
There's no standing water in the splash pad.
Oh. Okay.
It's just a. Spongy or whatever type of surface you can jump on and it has. Water spouts and all that. You can, you know, put your. Put your Speedo on Pete and go stand in there and. Unfortunately, I, I think the uh. Things are going to be, you're going to be taller than all those things that are, so you could be pretty dry there, but.
So it's basically, I'm up.
They should have put it down at the beach is what they should have put it down at, but that's for another.
I, I'm just saying, no, no pool, but give me a splash pad. Okay. Anything else on your list, Scoob?
Uh, what else? There's probably. No.
You got a list. I'm very impressed. I would have stopped harping earlier in the show if I knew you had this list.
I just got it. I just saw this and I said, I'm gonna.
Oh, go through it. Okay.
They get this all, everyone gets this in the mail. Check your mail.
I, I'll go check. I'll go check. I'm an anti-mail guy.
And then you can see George's summer.
Yeah, I'm going to look him up online. Send me a link on him. I'll put it in the, uh, in the show.
George, what is George talking about here?
You know, we gotta be more. We gotta be nicer, Scoob, so people and will. Come on our show. Thanks for listening. Thanks for listening to the Lake Forest Podcast. Please give us five stars and apples podcast. And smash that like button on Facebook, Instagram, follow us on Twitter. Let us know what you'd like to hear about the upcoming shows. Again, I'm Pete and can be reached at pete@lakeforestpodcast.com. The link will be in the podcast notes. We thank our Patreon sponsors Shark Guy Beach Fishing. The premier South Florida beach fishing experience at Longboat Key, Florida. Their world renowned captains not only put you on the fish, but help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out on Facebook or sharkguybeachfishing.com. Contact them today to schedule an outing. Shark Guy is not Scoob's guy. He's my guy for your next charter. Check out Shark Guy Outdoors. You want a good dinosaur tooth? Would also like to say we're thankful for the Patreon supporters. Reverend Luke Beck from the Church of the Holy Spirit. Matt A. Elizabeth B. Coastal Lance Otto RDM, Brad Stop Breakfast Group in Kenosha. And Greentown Tatter Waukegan. We got to get there for breakfast sometime. Mother's Day, happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Happy Mother's Day.
Get your cards.
Pam, happy Mother's Day. On behalf of my co-host, Scoob Walker, we thank you for listening.